Good evening and welcome to our regularly scheduled July 22 school board meeting. At this time, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good evening, school board and guests. First item on the agenda is our approval of the agenda. There are no additions or deletions to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as outlined?
So moved, second.
Motion by Suchin, second by Art. All those in favor of an approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Agenda is passed on a seven zero vote. Next on the agenda, one of our favorite portions of the agenda is our recognition. And I would like to welcome Eastview High School Principal Bruce Miller to the podium to introduce Mia Battistone, family career and community leaders of American National Advisor of the Year finalists, and the club members who attended Nationals earlier this month.
Thank you. Good evening, school board members, Chairperson Johnson and Superintendent Bolsoni. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize our Eastview family, consumer and career leaders of America, students tonight for their amazing accomplishments at the national conference a few weeks ago in Seattle. First, though, I would like to recognize Ms. Battistone. She's our FCCLA chapter advisor and a family consumer sciences teacher at Eastview. Ms. Battistone, at the leadership conference, was recognized as one of the five finalists for the National Advisor of the Year. This is the highest honor a chapter advisor can receive. This recognition celebrates her 18 years of unwavering commitment to FCCLA and remarkable achievement in fostering leadership and growth opportunities for our students. She has distinguished herself as a pillar of the FCCLA world, demonstrating exceptional leadership, chosen as a finalist from over 7,000 chapter advisors throughout the United States. It was Mia's vision in 2006 to establish a dynamic Eastview chapter that created diverse and a set of experiences for our students through leadership and service to our community. Today, Eastview's chapter is flourishing. It is one of the largest in the state with over 55 involved and connected students, consistently recognized at the local, state, and national levels with numerous awards and accolades. We'll hear more about that in a few minutes. Mia's initiative and leadership to guide and inspire our students, it's been phenomenal. She is often in the classroom after school, surrounded by students working on their projects, many of which are focused on serving others and incorporating district and other partnerships with our community, like drives to collect socks, underwear, and backpacks for those who need them, helping with our 196 Warrior 5K, which is a scholarship fund honoring our District 196 Gold Star families, packing meals for students across the world, and laying wreaths on the graves of our veterans at Fort Snelling. She has also connected our students to various state senators and representatives, empowering them to have influence and voice by testifying in front of the Education Finance Committee at the state Capitol. Mia's contributions extend beyond our local chapter. She is the president of the Minnesota Association of Family and Consumer Sciences and is a member of the Minnesota FCCLA Board of Directors. Her commitment to mentoring new teachers and advisors is a passion for her and extends to the Career and Technical Education Teacher Induction Program, where she serves as a mentor teacher serving our newest family consumer sciences teachers. She has also been recognized statewide for selfless leadership, earning accolades such as the Minnesota Advisor of the Year, the Spirit of Advising Award, and the Master Advisor Award. Finally, because of her devotion to mentoring others, specifically new FCCLA chapter advisors, she was also the recipient of the National Mentor Advisor Award, her second recognition at the national conference in Seattle a few weeks ago, celebrating her devotion to new chapter advisors. Congratulations, Mia, and thank you for all you do for our students and in mentoring others to provide an awesome opportunities for their students. Miss Mia Battistone.
Mia, at least you can tell us, who wrote your recommendations for your award?
I will. I didn't think I had to speak. I will speak with my... Will someone pass me the papers down there? But first of all, this is so humbling, and I have an amazing administrator, amazing students. My award nomination was the only student put in nomination. So it was amazing. I was just... And Himani is my state officer, and she is the one, along with Mr. Miller, that wrote the award, and they have been nothing but supportive. Mr. Miller goes along with all my ideas. And this is the first year this award has been started, and it's an Army Award. And I am a mama of an Army veteran. So the military and a lot of the things we do in FCCLA supports our military and our district. So that made it even more special. So I just am humbled and honored to have that award and just be recognized with the national advisors that were up there. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
So, alright, well, as Mr. Miller said, he said a lot of the different things I said. First of all, good evening, board members, Chairman Johnson and Superintendent Bolsoni. Thank you, Mr. Miller. I am humbled and privileged to advise FCCLA and lead the Family and Consumer Science Department at Eastview since 1997. Although we are the only district chapter, we are very proud to be one of the largest chapters in Minnesota, going up to 90 students some years. And as we said, this year we're at 55 students. We are consistently recognized for our state and national projects, receiving top honors in our competitions, both in-person and online events. Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, or as we say FCCLA, is a national career and technical student organization for students in family and consumer sciences education. And we have been around since 1945. Our chapter strives to help out with the needs of our school and community by participating and leading community service projects throughout the year and in competitive events. Our competitive events are called STAR events, Students Taking Action with Recognition. Each member competes at the regional, state, and national level as a team or as an individual, and they are recognized for proficiency and achievement in chapter and individual projects, leadership skills, and career preparation, all of which recognize students, participants, who demonstrate their knowledge, skills, and abilities to actively identify an issue, research a topic, develop and implement a project to advocate for positive change, which we do in Eastview, we do in our community. There are 35 STAR events that they can compete in. At our state conference in April, we qualified over 25 members digitally and in person to go to the National Leadership Conference in Seattle, Washington, which was June 28 through July 4, where many placed in the top 10. In the past few years since COVID, we have always had a top 10, more than one placement, which has been amazing. And my students do very, very hard work to get there. So I am proud to congratulate the following state conference national qualifiers, first alternates, and national leadership conference placements in the following events. So you will hear many of the different events. They will be a national qualifier or a national advisor, advancer. And then I will say NLC, which we have a lot of acronyms in the facts world. So NLC is the National Leadership Conference we compete in every year. So I'd like to start with Sarah Yusaf. She is in fashion, she competed in fashion design as a national advancer. Avery Losi and Kayden Pelter competed in chapter service project display, and they were national advancers. Savannah Bear, Haley LaCount Nuland, they competed in chapter service project portfolio and were first alternates, and then bumped up to advancers. Fatima Yusaf, career investigation, national advancer. Evelyn Clark and Elise Bradley, chapter service project portfolio advancers. Advika Chudhari, Johnhetha Guntemagadu, and Naomi Cook in food innovations, and they were first alternate with a 95 out of 100. Nora Brusko, public policy advocate, national advancer. Naomi Cook, Rea Rajual, McDelick, Tassefe, promote and publicize FCCLA, national advancer. Himani Mandal, and I'm gonna, there's a couple with some of these next ones. So, for Himani, she did a STAR event and leadership, national advancers. Speak out for FCCLA at NLC, placed first in the nation. Education and Training Challenge Test, third in the nation. And Red Talks for Education, sixth in the nation. Sahithi Atlery, interpersonal communications, silver at NLC. Jonica Willett, teacher trained, first alternate, technology and teaching, fourth place in the nation. Avani Marahada, public policy advocate, national advancer, third place in the nation. Kajal Bahal, chapter service project portfolio, sixth place in the nation. Rea Rajual, McDelick, Tassefe, fashion design, national advancer and silver medalist. Amy Birmingham, Kendall Thielan, Amy Nguyen, entrepreneurship, top 10 gold. Abby Ward and Emily Ward, chapter service project portfolio, national advancer, gold, silver, NLC. Mika Nunez, national advancer website, and Phelan Hetlin, chapter website, national advancer, sixth place. These are just a little snippet of what we do. They have done an amazing job. They represent Eastview and FCCLA so well through national offices and state offices. Thank you for inviting us to come before you to recognize the accomplishments of our FCCLA members. We are proud to be supported so well by District 196, Eastview High School, in all we do.
Thanks again for coming tonight. It was so nice to see you. Congratulations. What a deal. I'm so glad I got to come and meet you guys in class. Thank you so much. And we'll get that, we'll get working on that, that class. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much for coming tonight. What a deal. Congratulations, ladies. We'll get that, working on that class. That will be, that'll be perfect.
Next, I will turn it over to Superintendent Bolsoni for superintendent's recognition of students and staff.
Okay, thank you so much, Chairperson Johnson. I would like at this time to invite Rachel Hughes and Eric Hanson to the lectern to be introduced as new members of our superintendent's cabinet. Rachel Hughes is our Director of Instruction and Achievement, formerly known as the Teaching and Learning Department. Rachel has been principal at Thomas Lake Elementary since coming to our district four years ago from District 191. She started her career as a science teacher and has held school administrator positions at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high school. In her four years at Thomas Lake, Rachel led development and implementation of a data-driven school improvement plan that has increased student achievement and fostered an inclusive school culture that is based in a growth mindset and culturally responsive teaching. In addition to overseeing the instruction and achievement department, Rachel will be responsible for helping to lead the district through the implementation of a structured literacy curriculum and a multi-tiered system of supports for student learning. Welcome, Rachel, and you're welcome to add some comments.
Thank you. Thank you for this incredible opportunity to serve as the Director of Instruction and Achievement. I'm excited to lead our efforts in implementing Minnesota Multi-Tierred Level of Supports, or MTSS, and ensuring all students are reaching their full potential. I look forward to partnering with you to make our strategic plan come alive. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Next is Eric Hanson. Eric is our new Director of Secondary Education. Eric has worked in District 196 for 22 years, starting in 2003 as a media specialist at Shannon Park Elementary School. In 2005, he switched to the middle level as an assistant administrator and athletic director at Falcon Ridge Middle School. Three years later, Eric was hired to be the assistant principal at Rosemont Middle and has been the school's principal since 2017. During his years as a middle school administrator, Eric created opportunities for increased student voice. He used data to drive decisions and created collaborative teams to strengthen the school climate, culture, and community for all. As Director of Secondary Education Department, Eric will oversee our district's six middle schools and six high schools, which enroll more than 15,000 students combined. Welcome, Eric, and you're welcome to say some comments as well.
Thank you. Well, good evening, and thank you. I'm truly honored and grateful to stand before you today. I'm excited and eager to begin this new journey, and I'm committed to the success and growth of our students in District 196. I am fortunate to be surrounded by such talented colleagues in our district whose support and collaboration I deeply value. I look forward to working together with each of you to achieve our common goals and to create a future filled with success and accomplishments. Thank you once again for this incredible opportunity. I am humbled and honored to accept the Director of Secondary Education position, and I'm eager to begin this next chapter with all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Eric, and that concludes my recognitions. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Bolsoni, and welcome to our newest directors. We have no one signed up for special communication requests tonight, so that comes to our consent agenda. We have 12 items on the consent agenda tonight. They include minutes of the June 24, 2024 school board meeting, minutes of the July 8, 2024 special school board meeting, treasurer's report for May 2024, revenues and expenditures report for May 2024, gifts, truth and taxation hearing, long-term facilities maintenance 10-year plan for 2025 through 2034, elementary number 20 change order, elementary number 20 subdivision agreement, agreement for clinical experience with Augsburg University, agreement for clinical experience with Fontbonne University, and personnel. Are there any items that board members would like to remove from consent tonight? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Sakawdin, second by Leah. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries on a seven zero vote. We have no items of report tonight, so that brings us to our old business. I would like to welcome Jill Coyle to the podium to go over the second reading of Administrative Regulations 507.2 AR, student fees and fines.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Bolsoni. I am before you today with old business with one change to the district's Fees and Fines Regulation 507.2 AR. The administration seeks to increase the behind-the-wheel driver's education fee from $325 to $400. We went over background during new business back in June, but briefly, I'll provide background for our viewers at home. Behind-the-wheel instruction is an optional service the district offers. It's a requirement that a driver under the age of 18 must complete in order to get a driver's license in the state of Minnesota. In contrast with the district's Safety Ed course, which provides driver's instruction for credit, behind-the-wheel is not required for graduation, nor does it provide school credit. Rather, it's more of an optional service that families can also choose to get privately with various competitors out in the community. The administration seeks an increase in the fee due to the rising cost of leasing, insuring, and maintaining the behind-the-wheel vehicles, as well as the cost of staffing the program. Let's see, this was reviewed at the district's last, at the board's last regular meeting in June, and the administration now seeks your approval of the change.
Thank you. This is an action item tonight. So before I go to questions, is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Motion by Jackie, second by Sakawdin. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? With that, we have a motion by Jackie, second by Sakawdin. All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries on a seven zero vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no items of new business tonight, so that brings us to other action items. I would like to welcome Mark Stotts to the podium to go over the purchase agreement for land at County Road 42 and Biscayne Avenue.
Good evening, Chair Johnson, members of the school board, Superintendent Bolsoni. I'm here tonight to present to the school board a purchase agreement for the purchase of land on the southeast corner of County Road 42 and Biscayne Avenue in Rosemont, Minnesota. The purpose of purchasing this land is for the new Rosemont Middle School. As you recall, that was passed as part of the bond referendum in 2023, as well as monies to purchase land for that purpose. Some of the details of the proposed purchase agreement. Obviously, we're buying this from the University of Minnesota. It's part of the U-More Park property. It is east of the Amber Fields Development. We've agreed on a price of $202.20 per square foot, which equates to 95,800 per acre, for a total of $7,240,000 approximately. There's some change involved there. We're talking about 75.6 acres, so it's a really, really nice site for a middle school, which will allow for the building, bus parking, parent and staff parking, as well as athletic fields and so forth. If this purchase agreement is approved this evening, there will be a due diligence period of 120 days when we will submit our proposals to the city of Rosemont, as well as the city of, or the University of Minnesota. As part of the agreement, there are some design guidelines put on us by the University of Minnesota, as well as covenants, which we have to comply with. So in addition to that, we're responsible for all the infrastructure that's going to be installed to service the building and the utilities. There will be a lift station. We'll also have to extend Boulder Trail to our entrance so that we're able to access the property off of Biscayne Avenue. Beyond that, this has been a real long road. We've been talking to the university about this since before the referendum passed, so it's been almost a year and a half. In addition to that, we've had other parties involved. And I mentioned in the board exhibit, we want to thank Leslie Kruger, John Dostal with the University of Minnesota, but also representatives of Dakota Aggregates were really instrumental in being able to obtain this property. And so we want to recognize Sean Dahl and Pat Mason, as well as Tim Becken from Dakota Aggregates. But with that, I'd entertain any questions that you might have, and I recommend approval of this purchase agreement.
Thank you. Before we go into questions, this is an action item. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Motion by Art, second by Suchin. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members?
You talked, Jackie, go ahead. Sorry. You talked about covenances. Were there any kind of particular covenances that you was looking for?
A lot of it relates to the design guidelines. And so there's requirements that we built, we have offset from the property lines. Certain types of fencing and so forth aren't allowed. But nothing that we can't live with. We've worked with our architects and our construction management firm, and everybody's real comfortable with those requirements. And there's also, if we do determine that we need to do something different than the guidelines suggest, there's an appeals process.
Okay. Well, I would really like to thank you, the U of M, the Board of Regents, everybody else who worked on this project, because this has been, I was gonna say a labor of love, but then I know how long Mark has worked on it, and some of it might not get into the love category, because it was a lot of work.
Yeah, we've been talking to the university for six years.
Yeah.
And really about this piece of property for over a year and a half, so.
And we're really excited that it's going to be a great place for our school, a great amount of land there, and we really thank you for getting this done, and the Board of Regents for working through it.
Yeah, thank you. I should mention, the Board of Regents did approve the key business concepts of this agreement at their meeting. I believe it was last week or the week before, so.
Mark is going to write a book now about how to buy land from the University of Minnesota. It won't sell very much, but it'll be nice and big.
Yeah. No, we're really happy that we've gotten to this point.
Thank you.
Suchin.
Joining, and thank you and the team behind you that kind of got us to this point. And again, it's not lost on me that we really are a district, that this is a position of privilege to be able to grow, you know, when many districts aren't having that opportunity. So it's great that we have the opportunity, the means, and now the folks are bringing it together to ultimately serve more families and more students. So thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thanks, Cory.
Any other questions or comments from board members? I just wanted to add, I think when you drive down through southern parts of Rosemont, you think, there's a lot of land out here. We got so much to choose from, but I know as you found out and we found out, a lot of that land has plans, there are other things for it where it just wasn't an option for us. So to be able to actually lock in this plot of land is a big, big first step to the eventual middle school we're gonna build. And it's nice to be able to communicate with the community to let them know where they can expect to see that middle school going up as well.
Yeah, the one thing I should add that, you know, because it was such a long process and we didn't secure the property as quickly as possible, or as quickly as we had hoped to, we're shooting for a fall of 2027 opening of Rosemont Middle School, new Rosemont Middle School. The good news is, we've got a place where they can have school for the next couple of years. So we're not in any danger of not housing students. But it is a little, it's about a year behind when we had hoped, so.
Alright. Thank you very much. At this point, we have a motion to approve from Art, seconded by Suchin. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a seven zero vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, I would like to welcome Shelley Munson to the podium to go over our collective bargaining agreement with the Building Engineers Association of Rosemont. And you can stay at the podium for the next two agenda items after that as well.
Alright. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, Superintendent Bolsoni. I'll be referring to the exhibit, the Collective Bargaining Agreement with the school district's building engineers. These employees are represented by the Building Engineers Association of Rosemont and ratified the proposed working agreement on July 10. I'll highlight the terms of the settlement for you briefly. It's to increase wages, longevity, and differentials by 3.5% each year of the agreement, increase district contribution to health insurance by 12% in year one and 8% in year two, and the matching 403B contribution by $100 in each year of the agreement, with some other minor language modifications and clarifications. The total of the new costs during the term of this agreement will be within the parameters that you set forth. On behalf of administration, I recommend that you approve the collective bargaining agreement I just summarized, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Into questions, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Jackie, seconded by Leah. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? We have a motion to approve by Jackie, seconded by Leah. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a seven zero vote. Feel free to go into our next one.
Okay. Good evening again. Next, I'll be referring to the exhibit, the Collective Bargaining Agreement with the school district's principals and assistant principals. These employees, represented by the Principals Association of Rosemont, ratified the proposed working agreement on July 12. I'll highlight the terms of this settlement for you. Increase salary, education stipends, and longevity by 4% in each year of the agreement. Increase the district contribution to health insurance by 11% in year one and 8% in year two of the agreement. Increase the matching 403B contribution by $107 in the first year of the agreement, and other minor language modifications and clarifications. Again, the total of the new costs during the term of this agreement will be within the parameters that you set forth. On behalf of administration, I recommend that you approve the collective bargaining agreement that I just summarized, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Thank you. Is there a motion, is there a motion to approve?
I propose the motion.
In a second. Motion by Suchin, seconded by Art. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? We have a motion to approve by Suchin, seconded by Art. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a seven zero vote.
Okay. And next, I'll be referring to the exhibit on the Collective Bargaining Agreement with the school district's nutrition services employees. These employees, represented by Minnesota Teamsters Public and Law Enforcement Employees Union, Local 320, ratified the proposed working agreement on July 1. I will highlight the terms of the settlement for you. They're increasing their pay rates by 4% in each year of the agreement, as you see set forth in that table. Increase longevity, double school differential, and certification pay by 3.5% in each year of the agreement. Increase the district contribution to health insurance by 12% in year one and 8% in year two of the agreement. And increase the matching 403B contribution by $75 in year one of the agreement. There are a few other minor language modifications and clarifications, and the total of the new costs during the term of this agreement will be within the parameters you set forth. On behalf of administration, I recommend that you approve the collective bargaining agreement I just summarized, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Anna, seconded by Leah. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, questions or comments from Board members? Oh, Leah, go ahead.
Just real quick, I have to stay sort of on track with my usual love for the nutrition department, but I, in all seriousness, do want to say that I appreciate that we're, these are, these are tough positions. It's hard work, and I just want to say that I do appreciate that we're offering livable wage jobs in this field, where I know it's hard to get people and retain people, so just appreciation to you and the representatives.
They are very valued employees, make a big impact on our students.
Thank you. And thank you and the negotiations team for all the work you've done in these three contracts as well, staying within parameters, and all the work. I know it's easy to think it's two minutes of reading over the parameters, but it is a lot more work that goes behind the scenes to be able to get to this point. So thank you for all the work that you and your negotiations team has done on these contracts as well.
Thanks for your support.
Absolutely. We have a motion by Anna, seconded by Leah. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Next, I will turn it over to Superintendent Bolsoni for superintendent updates.
Okay, thank you so much. This Wednesday, July 24, our district will begin transitioning to a new system for paying for co-curricular registration and other school fees. All payment services will expire in the current system, My Payments Plus, on July 31, and we will be switching to the EduTrack Connect System. Parents and staff were informed of this update in an email late last month, and will receive another communication with Action Steps on July 24. Lastly, for those who want to take in a performing arts performance or show, Eagan High School Summer Community Theater is offering three more performances of Anastasia the Musical. The remaining performances are on July 25, 26, and 27. More information is available on the Eagan High School website with showtimes and the ability to purchase tickets. Thank you.
Are there any Board members with items they'd like to share tonight?
Oh, I have that one.
Go ahead, Jackie.
We all need to watch and cheer on Peyton Ardal as Rosemont High School graduate as he goes into the Olympics and brings home gold with his jacket.
Excellent. Good reminder.
Yeah.
Love it. And also, I just wanted to recognize Superintendent Bolsoni's first regular School Board Meeting. I got to embarrass him at our special School Board Meeting a couple weeks ago, but it is your first regular School Board Meeting, so congratulations again. We look forward to you occupying that chair for many years to come.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here.
Excellent. That brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Suchin, seconded by Art. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned. Our next regular scheduled School Board Meeting will be Monday, August 5.